Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Shelton Council Meeting. It's called Order. If anyone in attendance needs some amplifying devices, we do have them. We can't turn up this volume in here because it would affect feedback. So we do have devices back here if people would like to use some. All right. Commissioner McDowell, will you lead us in pledge, please?
I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Right, Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Schmidt is absent this evening. So Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson is attending via Zoom.
Here.
All right. Is there a motion to excuse Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
So moved.
All right.
I seconded.
All right. There's a motion to second to excuse Deputy Mayor Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Does the council have any changes to the agenda tonight? City Manager.
No.
All right. Do we have any board reports to share?
I do.
All right. Councilmember McDowell.
Well, there's really a board. But anyway, I attended the AWC Association of Washington Cities Small City on tap. And they meet different places around the state. They have different cities, like the larger cities have the larger functions in a larger city and then the small cities are are they go to smaller cities for their function. And it was very interesting last night. We talked about the city legislative priorities and I'm not going to each one, but funding local infrastructure systems, public safety vehicle pursuit, addressing the Blake decision, housing availability and affordability and behavioral health. And those will be very important subjects, topics for the legislature this year when it takes place. So I just in why I encourage our board members to go to those there. It's a kind of a networking. You get to meet the other mayors and council members from different cities. And so it's very educational, very enlightening. So that's where I was last night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other reports? All right. Is there anyone had a chance to read the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, we're at a general public comment. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. As a reminder, outbursts from audience are prohibited. Donna, you interested in making a public comment tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. First is Tammy Basaglobo. Did I get it close?
Got it really good. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy or thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Tammy Basaglobo. I am a Basin County resident. Typically, you'll hear me talking about the unhoused population, but today I come wanting to bring light to a different situation that's happening here in Mason County. I'm sure most of you are well aware, we are having a fentanyl epidemic going on and we're not losing lives of just the unhoused population, but those who are housed in successful individuals. And more recently, we have lost a youth. And so I have a background in substance use, so I hear a lot of what's happening. Although it's not always something that's talked about. I would like to see us talking more about what we can do as a community and to help address this situation. So no more lives are lost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Athena Ayers.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. In our last meeting, we had some really good feedback pertaining to our homeless population in this community. And there was just a few things that jumped out at me that I wanted to have the opportunity to expand on. In short, a portion of that meeting was to discuss the possibility of allocating just under $100,000 for one person's salary and benefits under the homelessness liaison or coordinator position. I can tell you that much of that job description is already being filled by people at Community Lifeline and/or other services. And what also stood out to me is just is that just for that one position, for that one person, that's that's almost a third of Community Lifeline's entire budget. So it's just something to bring to mind is that there are service providers already providing those services that could certainly benefit from that sort of support. What was also brought to my attention is that according to a 2015 HUD inventory count and IRS report, researchers found that nonprofits providing emergency shelter and other supportive services such as mental health, substance use and case management services received $25,806 per bed. And if that were the case for Community Lifeline at a 35-bed capacity, that would look like an annual budget of $903,200, excuse me, $903,210. And as I've shared with you, we're only at a fraction of that. I don't expect the city or the county to fully fund Community Lifeline. All I'm asking is to present the information as it is and ask for support in any way that you can provide it. And that can even just look like, hey, here are some good places to look for further support. We're working together. Community Lifeline provides a service for our city and our county, just as much as we're providing a service for our clients. And the last thing that I just wanted to mention before I run out of time is that in our last meeting, it was mentioned that nobody is dying on the streets. And I have to sadly report that that's not true. Just this year alone, we've lost six. And in the last couple of days, that's increased by two more. Last year in the wintertime, we had two individuals that I can remember literally losing their limbs due to frostbite in shelter seeking services. One person had their leg amputated and was losing actively, losing a foot. And the other person was also losing his foot. So those are the types of things we experience in the cold weather with our homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Richard McAfee. Richard.
Yes, I was wondering, when they're going to the pack on Eleanor Edgeirk Street. I turned in five times. It went 12 inches to five feet. Another Eleanor Street, Center Street. What does not go in Stonebridge? Was on down Eleanor Street. And that Center Street got dipped in your truck or car, dropped right down. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Next is Dean Jewitt.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Kind of want to have some conversations. A lot of the rhetoric that I have up here appears to be falling on deaf ears. Kind of like Charlie Brown's teacher, womp, 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 just goes in, out and one out the other and and we just kind of go on. But I'm going to continue. I actually had a conversation with my wife. Our cameras were going off in our building multiple times and I had to call for law enforcement to go down there and have people trespass. We thought about, well, why don't I just turn the cameras off? And I also thought about, well, geez, why don't I just not call in what I see? And I thought to myself, you know what? No, that's not the way it's supposed to happen. I can stand up and I can make these comments and people need to listen to them. So I appreciate it. I just look at the increase in the negative behavior that we have in our community. Okay, with these camps being cleared in Olympia, we have increased RVs showing up in ever increasing numbers, parking in all sorts of places, Front Street, Park Street, Brewer Park, Safeway, Park and Rides, County Streets. These things are almost causing accidents, near fatalities. They're leaving their garbage and information all over the place. They're highly illegal. I have no idea why our Washington State Patrol or even our local enforcement are not pulling them over. I mean, they have gross tonnage and weight right on them. And you can tell what is what's illegal and what's not. We have spending increases within the city budget for solid waste to include feces. I mean, are our public workers trained in proper human waste? Does the union even allow a public works employee to handle that? Or it doesn't have to be a trained sanitation worker? What does their union say? What kind of liability is that put onto the city? We've had study sessions on how to fund the maintenance in Neyland Park. Why? Didn't we already have it budgeted? We did. We burned up that budget on additional maintenance. So now we have to kind of go out and spitball and find out ways to clean up our city. I mean, have you guys seen the curbs? Have you seen the brown grass? Have you seen the state and the lack of walkability that we have? I mean, I don't, I don't understand. In our task force meetings, we've completely skipped over 15% of the problem that is the cause of 90% of our issues coming into our 911 centers. Why? Why? I mean, it's like, you know, we're talking about all the other things, but we're not talking about the cause of the problem. As far as I'm concerned, this is when leadership should shine. Either lead, follow, or get the hell out of the way.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Jewitt.
Hello. So I have heard many comments from many different people about the fact that Shelton isn't the only city with homeless problems. True. All cities pretty much are dealing with the homelessness and all of the things that affect the communities along with that. That's true. But to me, Shelton isn't every other city. Shelton is my city. I shop here. I live here. I support local businesses here. We support youth sports teams and events and kids. And so this is my city. And so I would like to imagine our city, my city, where visitors can come, families can walk the streets, community members can walk the streets and feel good about our city. That's what that that's what I would like to see. And imagine that all of these people would enjoy downtown without seeing shopping carts that are stolen full of belongings and trash. Piles of trash, piles of clothes, needles, cigarette butts, people doing drugs on the corners, people drinking in public, people having sex in public. Wow. Imagine our city without that. Just imagine how beautiful it would be. So beautiful. A place where people would want to come. A small little Leavenworth. You know, someplace that people want to visit and enjoy themselves. So imagine our downtown core, our downtown businesses feeling safe in a clean environment that they can thrive in. Imagine the pride that would exuberate from the storefronts because people want to be here and have a business here. Imagine the pride they would feel. And you know what? The funny thing about pride is it spreads. And right now, I don't see a whole lot of pride in Shelton. And maybe you see something different and that's absolutely fine. We all have different perspectives and I teach my students that every day. But pride spreads, a sense of accomplishment spreads. Let's feel good about Shelton. Imagine my city and pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one person via Zoom, Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director for Quixote Communities. Just wanted to continue to increase knowledge and give more information as it relates to costs to support homeless programs. For the National Alliance to End Homelessness, this is the statistical data that is given. Ending homelessness is not only an achievable goal, it's also one that would save money in the long run. The government spends an average of $35,578 per year per person who is out enduring chronic homelessness. Much of this money goes towards publicly funded services, including jails, hospitalizations and emergency room visits. If you take the $35,000 and you multiply that by the 254 that were reported at the last count from Mason County, that's a cost of $9 million a year to keep people on the streets. A solution for that is permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing. All of those help to decrease that number and reduce the cost. Permanent supportive housing costs approximately $12,000 a year. If you multiply that by the same 254 people that you have living on the streets in Mason County, that number is 3 million. So the cost savings just from providing services directed towards assisting people versus leaving them on the streets is to the advantage of the city. And I think that is largely why the city council and your city manager have been working diligently to find solutions to this. I believe that all of us feel that this has reached a crisis. And I have seen from them action to support changing that outcome and to making it better. And at Quixote Communities, obviously, you've all seen that we started construction on the site. We will be adding 30 units of permanent supportive housing. Athena and Community Lifeline has been working very diligently to try and get as many beds open as they can. I know that community, all of your community providers who help with homeless services are wanting to see this happen, are expecting to be funded and to help assist the city in whatever way we can. So I really just appreciate all the work the city has done. We appreciate their willingness to listen and to work towards solutions. And if anyone would like to know more, please seek out my name and information as well as any of the other providers in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that hasn't had a chance to speak? All right. We're now on to our business agenda. We have City Manager Jeff Knight with information for us about the LTAC Recommendations Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Tonight, we have the LTAC Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Recommendations. Each year, the city accepts grants, grant applications requesting funding, funding from a dedicated revenue source provided by the collection of use tax from the hotels and motels in the city. And the city tourism budget is a restricted fund that can only be used for facilities or events authorized by state law, RCW 67.28. So in 2022 this year, when council awarded the grants, we council awarded 65,758. And you see those recipients on the staff report. This year, we received applications totaling 88,850. And the LTAC Committee recommended the grants be funded as listed in the staff report for Bluegrass from the Forest, the Forest Festival Association, or the Historical Society Museum, for the Downtown Car Show, Christmas Town Marketing and Events, the Outlook Park mural installation, Cinco Rocks, which is an event downtown here, and Schoolhouse Rocks also downtown, and the Downtown Merchant's Shop Shelton First Program. And the total recommendations for this year are $68,000 even. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for a comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
I moved forward the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations on the action agenda to the October 18th council meeting for further consideration.
Okay.
Okay, comments or questions? Right, we have a motion to second to forward the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation to action agenda on October 18th. Council meeting, council meeting for further consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us regarding 2023 preliminary budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. The budget document that's being presented at this first public hearing is rather lengthy, so I'd like to summarize some of the parts of it and provide you with some highlights. The document begins on the first page with Exhibit A that summarizes proposed expenditures by all of the funds that we use to operate the City of Shelton. We're proposing as total expenditures for 2023, again across all funds, a total of $40,261,452. So I know that the budget document can be a little bit much. And so we want to try to break it down and make sure that the public and council alike have a chance to understand everything and ask any questions. So we'll have another opportunity at a second public hearing before the budget's adopted. Remember to advance here myself. Okay, on the next page of the budget document, you'll find Exhibit B in this page summarizes estimated beginning fund balance, 2023 proposed revenue, 2023 proposed expenditures, the proposed ending fund balance, followed by columns showing the dollar change and percentage change and breaking out again all of the funds that the City of Shelton uses. And then beginning on page three is a description by fund of the 2023 budget proposal. It begins with the general fund summary, followed by a more detailed description of each department's annual budget, which includes expenditures by division within the department where applicable. And follows with a breakdown of the department's staffing allocation where we're showing a rolling four-year history, allowing readers of the budget document to see where any changes have occurred. We're providing historical, current and proposed budget information to be as open and transparent with the budget process as possible. So this is an example of the finance department. But this occurs for each department within the city. So starting with the general fund for the City of Shelton and then following it on through. There will be a couple of changes we bring between the first public hearing and the second public hearing of the budget. As council is aware, we're working very hard to put the budget together with short timelines and to meet deadlines. And so the first change that you're going to see will be a breaking out of the community development and parks, recreation and facilities functions in tonight's document. They're listed as one. But since the city has organized these units differently, really at the end part of this fiscal year and all of next year will show those. It won't change the FTE allocation or budget amounts, but it will more accurately represent how we're operating those functions of the city. There also may be some slight revenue revisions to the revenue budget. I'm hoping higher than lower, just to interject that at this point. But it's not going to be anything that substantially affects the bottom line to cause any significant changes. But again, we'll update that to give you the most current data available. So to continue highlighting just a few other parts of the budget that have some significant investment in projects and capital for our city and to provide a just a brief understanding of the budget document that you have. As we discussed in study session, the general fund is supporting the street fund activities in the amount of just over $566,000 for the 2023 budget. The 2023 budget includes the following transfers out of transportation benefit district resources as well as other funding sources. And just to highlight some of these important and visible projects, we're investing in the road safety plan, the Western Gateway Project, the Olympic Highway North, Front Street paving, the overlay of Wallace-Neyland and signalized intersection upgrades and then the ADA transition plan. And those are funded in part also with some washstop monies and other funding. The Capital Resources Fund is used to account for special revenues. The 2023 proposed budget includes the following as transfers out. And I highlight them to just share with everyone some of the projects that the city will be engaging in to provide our citizens in 2023. We'll be using some of our remaining ARPA funds to support street maintenance. $23,000 will be used for the library deck repair. That's contingent on us receiving a Department of Commerce grant. And I'll also mention that in relation to the Library Endowment Fund, but as long as we get that grant, then we're obligated to spend this amount of money. That's to repair the debt on the library building itself. $106,000 for the, out of the general resources for the painting of this building, the Civic Center. And then $25,000 for access control to provide just better security and access to all city facilities. Earlier in tonight's agenda, we talked about the Tourism Fund and the LTAC Recommendations. This part of the budget memorializes that. If we need to update it between now and the second hearing, we'll do so. So it lists out all of those projects that the Advisory Committee is recommending support of. That's a part of the budget. Again, I know this is a long budget. I believe it's 74 pages. So just to highlight some of these and give a little bit more understanding, that's what we're doing here. Summary about what the Tourism Fund is and then what the proposal is to fund in 2023. Next, I'm going to highlight the capital projects being planned for 2023 from the enterprise funds. So for the Water Capital Fund, the projects included in 2023 are listed here. They include continuing the Automated Meter Infrastructure Project, pipe replacement, pressure zone work. I'll get into specifics that are far out of my expertise, but Public Works Director Harris and his staff have planned to continue using those resources to upgrade our capital infrastructure. You'll notice that much of it is coming from what we already have in the fund. Continuing on then with Sewer Capital Fund projects. A part of that is also to continue the Automated Meter Infrastructure Project, tank design, headworks upgrade, overflow and pipe removal design, and then a new camera van. And I believe we've talked about some of that in the studies, the two study sessions that we've had leading up to the budget hearing tonight. Out of the Equipment Maintenance and Rental Fund, and this is a fund that the city uses to make sure we're essentially saving to replace some of our assets. And in this fund, I just wanted to share with you some of what we're planning to do next year because they're investing in capital. And I know that's important to council as well as in capital, and I know that's important to council as well as to citizens that we're continuing that investment in what the city has. There's twenty thousand dollars going towards fueling station repairs, a new patch truck, and then a new three-quarter ton pickup. So the total expense out of that for twenty twenty-three is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then I mentioned the Library Endowment Fund. This accounts for an endowment given to the city for maintenance of the library building. This fund is sharing in the cost for the replacement and repairs to the library deck. And again, the fund will only be used if the city receives a Department of Commerce grant that would allow that project to proceed. So these are some highlights of what's happening along with all of the regular activities of the city. So contained in that big general fund section again are the department budgets for police, public works, administrative services, and all of their functions of the city. So that's the, my presentation for this part of the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Donna, has anybody signed up for public testimony?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
We have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to forward the twenty twenty-three annual budget to the November first council meeting for the second public hearing to allow the public another opportunity to be heard on budget consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Nope, all right. We have a motion and a second to forward the twenty twenty-three annual budget to November first council meeting for second public hearing to allow the public another opportunity to be heard on the budget under consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. We'll resume our regular meeting. Our first action item is a resolution deeming correct equipment. A sole source, Public Works Superintendent Brett Armstrong has details for us.
Good evening. This is just to update from the last meeting to take action on making correct equipment a sole source for Wilo products at the sewer treatment plants. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Donna. Any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a reading of Resolution one two four five dash zero eight two two.
Resolution number one two four five dash zero eight two two. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, declaring the purchase of Wilo USA LLC water and wastewater pumps and mixers, equipment, parts, components, and service to be clearly and legitimately limited to a sole source through correct equipment and waiving competitive bidding requirements for such purchases and service needs.
And do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution number one two four five dash zero eight two two as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number one two four five dash zero eight two two as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Senior HR Analyst Leander Sharp has information for us about a contract for municipal court judge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am bringing to you the reappointment of Municipal Court Judge Stephen Greer. None of the information from the last meeting has changed. It is still the desire of the city to reappoint Municipal Court Judge Stephen Greer for a three-year term.
All right, Donna, anyone sign up for a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Municipal Court Judge employment agreement as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Just wanted to say that I've heard some of the public things about Judge Greer, and I'm happy that he's with us.
I agree. Right. We have a motion and a second to approve the Municipal Court Judge employment agreement as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Now we have a contract for our court security officer. Administrative Service Director Michelle Sutherland has details.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm bringing to you this evening the court security contract for Thomas Pur, Blue Max LLC. He's been providing court security services for the municipal court here since twenty twenty. So the contract automatically renews year to year. And we recommend approval of the court security contract. And if you have any questions?
Thank you. We have any public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Right, we have a motion.
I move to approve the court security contract as presented.
Comments or questions?
We have.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, was there a second? Second. Sorry. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve court security contract as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Our last action item is the contract for Government Relations Services. City Manager Jeff Knight has details for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I mentioned at your last hearing on September twentieth, Philip Spurgis has been providing lobbying services to the city since twenty eighteen. Has been very successful, and there have been no changes to the contract since your last hearing. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, Donna, anybody sign up for a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize City Manager to sign that attached contract with Philip Spurgis Government Relations LLC.
All right, comments or questions? I'm sorry, yes, second.
Second.
You guys gotta be fast with your second. All right. Anybody comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize City Manager to sign the attached contract with Philip Spurgis Government Relations LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Jeff, it is your turn. You have City Manager to report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, as with a lot of things during the pandemic, things changed. But we are trying to get back to where we were before with some of the presentations to council. One of the things that we did not do over the last several years is highlight to council our Officers of the Year and our civilian employees in the Police Department that are employees of the year. So I wanted to mention those folks now, and then we'll continue that practice going forward the way we had PC. So for the year twenty twenty, the Reserve Officer of the Year is Matt Weir. And the Officer of the Year is Michael DeRoche for twenty twenty. Civilian Employee of the Year was Samantha Gannell. So I wanted to highlight those folks' efforts on behalf of our community. For twenty twenty-one, the Reserve Officer was also Matt Weir. And the Officer of the Year for twenty twenty-one is Jason Lawson, who I think most of you have met. The Civilian Employee of the Year for twenty twenty-one was Sarah Childers. So again, we thank those folks for their efforts in helping our community and keeping them safe. Next thing I wanted to mention, Oyster Fest, had a great time. I was out there Sunday morning and got my file oysters and looked like there were quite a few people out there. I knew there were more people on Saturday, but I was very happy not to have to fight that traffic, so good for me. And for the folks that went on Sunday. Next, wanted to go over the looking ahead real quick. On next Tuesday, here at the Civic Center, out in the main room, in the large room, we'll have the Spotlight Shelton Event, and that event will start at six PM and is planned to go through eight PM. So we'll be here for that event. That'll be in place of your regular study session that we generally have on the off council Tuesdays. And then on the eighteenth, we'll have ordinances that are related to stormwater and open space standards for development. Those are things that have, well, the open space part, I believe, has gone through the Development Code Committee. So you'll be hearing those, those items along with the business item, the one business item that you heard tonight, because the budget has to be separated by a certain amount of time for two different public hearings, which is why, which is why it's scheduled for two meetings from now rather than the next one as typical. And lastly, let's see, Spotlight Shelton is the other thing I had written down. I already mentioned that. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
All right, any comments or questions for Jeff? Council, have any ideas for discussion?
I just wanted to put out a couple things. I wanted to thank you for everyone who is taking the small town discount to work here in the city of Shelton, the thrill of Shelton pride, and that we show it and all our employees show it, and that our parks are beautiful when I walk around. Also, I do walk the streets every night with my dog, and everyone, everyone member of this council has seen me, and they all have seen me with my dog and her little, you know, red little light, me with my flashlight, and it's really beautiful out there, especially during now this holiday season, infected Chamber of Commerce for keeping the lights up and the Christmas spirit that we have. And this is really a beautiful town, and this is why I chose to live here. And I think that we need to continue to have that spirit. We already have this pride. We just need to be positive about it, and I think that most of us are. So I'm proud to live here, and I'm proud that everyone is here taking the small town discount to work for the city. So thank you, Shelton.
Thank you, council member. Any other ideas for discussion? All right. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, October eighteenth at six PM. We also have a Spotlight Shelton on Tuesday, October eleventh at six PM. This meeting is adjourned at six forty PM.